Citizens Communication after that. We are going to, let me just, before I forget now, Councilman Solis, you wanted to combine Resolution E1 with ordinance C2?
C2.
Those are the tow trucks?
Yeah, the tow trucks and the tow truck fees.
Talk about them together and vote on them separately?
Together.
Okay. I know there's some people here who want to hear about that. We'll just get that done up front together. And then I know the, there's some interest in the item, the city manager report about the Victoria Parks Improvement Association, which is golf course. And so I've asked the city manager to, under items from council, to debrief us about that a bit, to get some of the information out. And that way, if anyone wants to speak about afterwards, they certainly can. So we are in items from council. I have a couple of others, but you guys have anything in particular?
I wanted to pull a couple of things.
Okay.
Actually, I wanted to pull three, four, five, six, seven, and eight from the consent agenda.
Three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. The whole consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. It's perfectly fine with me. If you have questions, that way we can go down them one at a time.
Okay.
Counsel, y'all have anything else? I just did want to mention, it's been discussed, the no texting bill. The governor did sign that today, as I understand it. I'm not sure when it would go into effect. I'm sure that the media will cover that further in the coming weeks, or what its actual impact, or what it was. But that has come up occasionally in conversation. I don't recall what we talked about here. Jeff, did we?
Last time, we were gonna wait and see if the state acted upon it in this session.
Correct. Thank you. I don't, we did discuss that here. But I have had a lot of conversations out in the public about it. And so it looks like state decided for us, whether you think that's good or bad. But anyway, I just want to mention that. Let me see if there's anything else. I don't have anything else. If not, what we'll do, city manager, would you tell us, update us quickly on the golf course?
Sure. I met with the president of the VPIA board yesterday and two other board members, and they have given us notice that they wish to terminate the lease effective July 1. So, which means that effective July 1, we will take over maintenance and operation of the golf course. I met today with the, this afternoon with the parks director and the finance director. We're developing a plan on what that's gonna look like during the transition. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring you back a more detailed report on, in the June 20 meeting, so, on how we're gonna manage that. The board has worked really hard over the last several months on their finances and how to manage the course. And they just finished up their annual membership drive. They wanted to see what the membership drive numbers did. So after that, they came to the decision that it was in their best interest to terminate the lease. So they have pledged their willingness to work with us during the transition. I know Kobe's already been out there today looking at what's there and what's available. So I know that we'll work smoothly over the next few days and get ready to take on that maintenance, so.
Very good. Very good. I don't know if there's any board members here, but I really want to thank them, and I appreciate all their efforts over the many years. I know there's been rotation of board members, but I appreciate their efforts at managing that and doing the best they can and recognizing, I'm sure coming to this decision was difficult for them. And thanks, Charmel. Y'all worked on that a long time to try to figure something out. And I would just say, from speaking for myself, my goal or hope is that we keep the course functioning and it gets better over time. I think it's a great, great community asset. So I don't know about any other council members, but I hope we can keep it going and improvement, and improving, rather, so.
Absolutely.
Charmel, are you gonna be coming back? I don't think my mic's on. Are you gonna be coming back to us with the recommendations as to what we're gonna have to do, especially if it's, anything has to do with the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. We're looking at what temporary, short-term needs to be done with Kobe taking over the maintenance in the short run. And then my recommendation is gonna be that we go out for an RFQ to look for a management company to manage the golf course. So, but we've got this short-term gap that we'll work on doing.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to just say, I don't think that anybody should have the expectation that any course conditions are gonna improve drastically overnight. And it's gonna be a slow process to get that course back in shape. But I echo what the mayor said. It's a jewel for the city to have, and I'd like to see it restored to its former glory, but it's not gonna happen just overnight. So please be patient.
And you know, one thing about Kobe, I know you know a lot about Kobe, but he has, you know, in his previous life, has managed golf courses. So it's not new to him. It's just how do we get to where we need to be in the short term, so.
Okay. All right. Is there, so we're still under items from council? Anything else at all? If not, okay. So we'll move into citizens communication. So anyone that would like to speak, please give your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to less than five minutes. We do put the clock up on the board. I'll remind you if you go over a little, just as a courtesy to everyone else.
I can.
So, yes?
A suggestion too. For those that may be here for the tow truck ordinance, there will be a public hearing when that comes up. So for anybody with a tow truck, you can speak at that time.
On the ordinance, absolutely. So you bet, if you don't come up now, as again as the city manager said, there'll be a second opportunity for that item. All right. Thank you.
Chip Dance, 103, Brooks Road, Victoria. Is it appropriate to speak to the golf course issue now?
This would be the time, yes.
Thank you. I too would like to, to say what a gem that could be. And I would certainly encourage, encourage y'all to pursue the highest and best use of that. I just finished, fact is, I just came off the course about 22 minutes ago. But, and I also was one that renewed my membership. I was, I was a member last year for the first time, and I just renewed the first of this month. We have some questions, certainly the letter that was sent out by, by the Improvement Association indicated that those that had cart sheds and lockers needed to clear out. That, that's gonna create a fair imposition. Is, is there a chance that you might reconsider that before that deadline?
We'll look at everything, Mr. Dance. Thank you for bringing it up. Sure. We're, we're trying to get that transition down.
Yeah, I know it's real, I know it's real short notice and, and one thing or another, but I know that those that, those that do have, have sheds, it's a real imposition to, to get out and to come back. And if, and, and then, of course, the other question is, those of us that, that are paying monthly for our annual dues, it was pretty clear in their letter that they would, they would cease charging, you know, after the end of the month. And it was clear that they were going to reimburse those that had paid in full for the year. But I guess I'm curious when, I mean, will, July 1, do you hope to have another fee structure in place so we can continue? And/or do you suspect that you'll contend or honor those of us that have agreed to, to a one-year contract to pay monthly?
The contract agreement is, and normally, we don't debate this. I know, I'm waiting on Thomas to tell me to stop. The contract agreement is between you and VPIA. So that is an issue that you'll have to settle with them. So as far as a fee structure and moving forward on July 1, that's one of the things, yes, we will eventually have a fee structure, but we're working on those details. And so I don't have all those details ironed out today.
So you might suspicion that come July 1, it would just be a clean slate, and you'll come up with some kind of a fee if I want to play on July 1?
That would be my speculation at this point.
Thank you. I know, I know it's early on, but there's lots of questions out there.
And then the July 1, I don't want anybody to hold us to the July 1. I know July 1 that we're gonna have to start mowing it, so, and, and taking care of it. But I don't want anybody to walk away with believing that, you know, you may be able to play golf on July 1. It may be, you know, a few weeks later or something. But we've got to work all those details out, so.
Thank you.
Perhaps, perhaps if there's a process of communication with all the players and VPI, as part of their willingness to work with us, we can use that same method to communicate with everybody faster.
Well, the obvious thing is, we're not gonna close it down regardless.
Oh, no, no. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Citizens Communication, sir.
4606, Begonia, Victoria. Pretty much all the questions that could be answered were just answered. My point being is that I'll have to clear out 45 years of junk inside my cart shed if it's July 1. And just wondering if that could, is extended? Is that a due date? Or I know you just answered Chip and said, no, it's not really a date. But they pretty much said in the letter that came from the Riverside is that it's, it's get out of here, pretty much, on vacate the property.
Again, I'm gonna go back to, and I note, the attorney kinda reminded me, would probably be here all night answering these what-if questions.
Yeah, okay.
The agreement is between you and VPIA for any, you know, lease agreements or any memberships. So I heard what Mr. Dance asked, and I'll be glad to take that under consideration on how we transition.
Okay, well, I was just wondering about the cart sheds, or you guys wanting them clear on July 1? Or is that what, whatever Riverside put in there, is that true?
That's exactly what we discussed yesterday. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And again, just for the public and the council, you know, we've got, we need to make it that clean transition at the end of the contract. So we've got to be able to transition away from VPIA and into the city hands, so, that's what we're working on. But I will, like I said, Mr. Dance, I will make a note of that.
My, my two cents would, and I don't think I need to say this to you, but for them to err on the side of flexibility and, and, you know what I mean, with all, regarding some of these things, if they need time. And I know that you'll do that.
Oh, yeah.
So, so citizens communication still open? Now would be the time to talk about anything whatsoever. Name and address for the record.
My name is Benjamin Desi Lopez, and I live at 2002 and 1/2 Southwest Ben Jordan Street. I first wanted to thank Mr. Golds and his wife personally for Nazareth Academy. My godson just finished his second year there, and she's a religious teacher. And he was baptized and did his first holy communion at St. Mary's, as well as at St. Paul in San Antonio. If it wasn't for your wife, he wouldn't be so blessed, young child. Mr. Halapascus, I'd like to thank you for continuing to donate to Christ Kitchen, all the pies, the cream pies, the coconut cream pies. Those are my breakfasts, and I really appreciate those. I mean, I volunteer there seven days a week. And I have to start at John Hopkins Park where I live. And I go down to where the Park and Recreation Building, and Kobe's doing a great job foreseeing what needs to be done for all the parks. I walk through Hopkins Park, and I go by the Boys and Girls Club, and I go through the convent. And I do this from 3:00 to 6:00 in the morning because it's so peaceful down there. But when I get to the park and I get out of the kitchen, oh my god, is there a lot of mentally ill people in those parks that need a lot of help. And I'm mentally ill too. I'm bipolar, manic depressive. There was an article written about me last year by the Victoria Advocate, by Victoria, Victoria Priest. And you know, it, it was a great article. But I have people throw a lot of those sentences back in my face, certain clips, you know. Sheriff O'Connor said, "We fill out the form when they come in, but we don't know if something's gonna trigger them from 18 months ago." Well, I get triggered all the time. Sometimes 18 years back, I go back. And you know, I wanted to start the Victoria Graffiti Abatement Program. But this is a small city. I'm from San Antonio and Los Angeles. So you know what, you guys, although I see the graffiti, as Police Craig said, you guys aren't ready for my program yet. But I do, I do, I'm associated with NAMI, National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. And I see the papers on Sundays, and I see all the writings that you guys have, wanting to help mentally ill people. Well, if we want to help the mentally ill, then let's get NAMI here. And NAMI's a grassroots organization based out of Washington, DC. All they do is they use family support, and they have family meetings. It can be held at Christ Kitchen. I've already talked to Trish. I talked to Faith Family and Parkway. I don't really know how to do all the small print like an attorney and get all the paperwork together, but I knew, I do know how to present myself. And I have worked hard for Victoria since Katrina hit, because that's when I moved from Victoria's Texas City and Lamarck. I've been in Victoria since that day at Contuse Flower Shop. I rest a lot, but I walk a lot, I pace a lot. I take my medicine now, so I don't have issues. But I still have trigger moments. And my family's my trigger. But I love my family. Blanca Jimenez volunteers at Nazareth Academy, just so we can afford for Anthony to go to that school. But we want Anthony to be at a 150-year-old school that's the best. And he realizes that, and he ended up being the top student in his class. I was a top student in my class all the way until I graduated from USC. I wasn't a Heisman winner. I was a Heisman hopeful because I tore the ligaments in my knee. And I had to give my position to Willie McGinnis. And he ended up playing for the New England Patriots and getting Super Bowl rings. But he wouldn't have passed certain classes if I wouldn't have done his studying for him. I've worked hard in my education. People say I'm smart, and I tell them I'm not smart, I'm just educated. And I got lucky to be educated. But when I retired, I came here to Victoria 10 years ago, sometimes before you guys were in office. And I prayed for this community, because that's what I do every day. I go to 6:30 Mass or I go to 12 o'clock Mass. I see Mr. Garza. I see my doctor on tone. But most of all, I see the Holy Spirit tell me to keep doing what I'm doing. And that's going to Christ Kitchen every day. Faith Family comes on Saturday and works in the community. We go around and we weed eat and we garden. We pray for the families around there, because there's a lot of bad that's around there too. And with the light, there's the dark. And you know what? I have the pleasure of knowing Paul Palowski. We, you know, I haven't had the honor of breaking bread with all of you guys yet. But once again, I invite myself to be of service to any district that needs me. Zone 1, Zone 2, whichever one, because I walk this city. I don't take the bus no more, because I figured the bus goes around the circles, takes me 45 minutes when I could walk and be there in 15 minutes. But I mean, Victoria is a beautiful city. I don't have to make it great again. It's already great. And I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Golds, because your wife made my year very blessed this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Citizens Communication's still open to talk about anything you want. Okay. Going once, going twice? Okay, I see. Now, again, just to clarify, on the tow truck issue, you will have another opportunity to get up and discuss only that issue. Okay, we'll go ahead and close citizens communication, and we'll move into ordinance. We do have one ordinance without a public hearing.
That is Item C1, which is an ordinance repealing in its entirety Section 22-93 related to routes for trucks carrying hazardous materials from the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. The next three have a public hearing.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending Chapter 23 of the Victoria City Code related to tow truck permits, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay, this one requires a public hearing. And then, of course, we'll, as soon as we vote on this, we'll read the Resolution E1 and vote on it separately, but we'll talk about them together. But for now, if you're here on the regarding tow truck issue and you would like to come forward, now would be the time just to talk about that particular issue. Okay. All right. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion. We'll close the public hearing on C2. Okay. We have a motion and second on, on C2. And just for clarification, the ordinance just has made some changes to the ordinance itself and then the resolutions for the fees. I think y'all know that. And you know, I, counsel, I see a few people that got up and left and came back, and I think they're here regarding the tow truck. Well, there's no need to reopen the public hearing.
Are we gonna modify this with those recommendations?
I, I can talk about what's in the ordinance if you don't have any direct questions, but just kind of a summary of that. You know, we changed some of the language to align with the state language. We are requiring some additional documentation through the permit process. We're, you know, removing the requirement that we inspect at one time a year. And there's already language in there that allows us to spec throughout, inspect throughout the year, so we will use that option. The appeals demand, the appeals process came to the city council recommending we change that to where it comes to the city manager. As, as you know, as anybody else knows, you can always appeal to the city council any decision I make. But it'll keep it moving from trying to have to do it within council meetings. But also, there's language in there that will actually provide us a method to do a tow fee study. We didn't have language set out in the ordinance. We did, in the resolution, allow the city manager to adjust the fees based on CPI, but no specific method to do that. So I think that's a good addition there. It calls for two or more truck, tow truck companies to request the fee study, and they can do that every 48 months. So, but to take a step, that's kind of the ordinance. One other thing that was not mentioned in the scene one is, in the past, if you want it to be on the non-consent rotation, you paid $450 for the first truck, $750 for additional trucks. I'm recommending that it's just $450 per truck and not a tiered, a dollar amount for anybody that wants to have more trucks than one on there. So that, that's kind of the majority of the changes. The ordinance does have strike-through, so you can see that when you read it. But step backwards, I was asked to look at the rates, probably nine, eight, nine months ago, quite some time, by Alan Miller Jr. So he provided me some information. I took some time looking at it and to come up with, when we get to the rates, to come up with the rates, but also to go through the ordinance and try to clean up the ordinance a little bit. So we, I sent out all the changes that I was proposing to the tow trucks that are on the rotation, asked them to comment back on any changes. I received comments from three different tow trucks back on the changes, took those under advisement. Some, some changes we made, some I felt like we were okay where we were at. And then I resent back out on Friday the ordinance as you were receiving it for any comments. So as of this morning, I've not heard any comments from any of the tow truck operators.
I just have a question on the establishing a process for requesting and performing a tow fee study. You said that would be every 48 months?
That's the minimum. They, they can't do it every 12 months, or they'd have to wait 48 months before they can request another one. So they, they don't have to request a tow study, but if they choose to, like, if we do this today, they're gonna have to wait 48 months before they request another study.
That would be the biggest change, would it not?
I'm sorry?
The tow fee study.
Yeah, the tow fees.
That would be the biggest change to this ordinance.
Yeah.
Because prior to that, they did not have that ability.
Now, under the resolution, it still allows me to make adjustments based on CPR.
Right, because it does make a reference in the resolution to the absence of a fee study.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I was thinking, well, if we discuss both of them at the same time, you know, we could have clarity on that.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is, this is just a little thing, but I'd like to talk to the city attorney on 2354G, those first two sentences. I know where he was trying to get to, but I, I feel like there's a little bit of a conflict between the two, and so I may have an amendment at the, at the next meeting because I can't quite figure out what to do with it, and I know where he was trying to go. But it looks like you, you can either be at a place to tow, or you can be at a place to not tow, but you can't, you can't drive to the place where you're gonna be towing. You can be there, but you can't get there. And if you're getting there, you can't be towing. So if, if you read it, because you have nothing else to do.
Oh, yeah.
But we're probably, I'm gonna suggest we put a less or something in there. But I just wanted to tell you that I may have an amendment if I can figure it out.
And you're, you're suggesting you may propose that at a subsequent meeting, not tonight?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We'll combine the second and third, and you know, if y'all, you two get together and figure that out, and then present it to the rest of council. That's not really probably substantive to the
No.
Tow truck operators who are interested in this. Okay. Any other questions on the ordinance changes? Sounds like you did good work and got good feedback, so.
Alan.
Okay.
I appreciate Alan Jr.'s help, too. He was
Very good.
Educated me on how tow truck business works, so.
Okay. All right. No further discussions on the ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, the ordinance passes, and now we'll do the Resolution E1.
E1 is a resolution establishing maximum rates to be charged by tow trucks operating under a contract with the city for rotation list privileges and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Discussion?
I could make a few comments if you don't mind.
Right.
If it'll help.
Please do.
The last time there was any rate adjustments done was 2011. So it's been six years since we've done any rate adjustments. You'll, I gave you what the current rates are and what the proposed rate was, the flat fee of the $200, kind of, so you don't have the additional add-ons that currently they're allowed to do. But, and also, we're adding in a mileage rate that was not in the fee ordinance before, where if they have to transport a vehicle outside the city limits other than to a storage unit, then they can charge a mileage rate. I think it's important to remember, on the non-consent tow, the tow trucks carry the risk of that, because they're not guaranteed payment. They will, again, this is the maximum that they can charge, and so they will seek payment by, from the owner of the car if possible. They do get left a lot of times with a car that the owner's not gonna pick up, or there's no value, so.
Or no insurance?
No, yes, sir. And so I think that's important when you're, we're thinking about the non-consent. It's also very important, this creates kind of an orderly process for tow trucks to respond to accidents. It's, it's critical that we get that accident scene cleared as quickly as possible without creating any more danger out on the roads. The light tow trucks are asked to be there within 30 minutes. The heavy tow has an hour. So that's also important to keep in mind when we're talking about these rates.
I have one question on the cleanup fee. I've seen several places where, you know, there's been an accident and the debris's still there. Who's supposed to clean that up?
The tow truck companies are supposed to clean it up, if they're called out for it. If they're not, our fire trucks sometimes clean it up, our fire employees.
Okay.
Seen it too.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know that anyone was called. I'm suspicious on some of them that I've seen, there was no response, like broken headlights and stuff, and they were able to drive away.
That could be it, but it's still kind of a, it's, you know, like, okay, there's debris there, you could, you know,
Right, right.
Get hurt somehers.
Yeah, yeah.
These rates will be effective July 1.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. No, I just, you know, I remember when I first sat out here in the audience, I didn't understand this ordinance at all. And so I just, for the viewing public, you know, we don't set fees on toes between consensual when an owner calls the tow truck drivers, that's between them and the customer. This is only when we are the ones making the call, because the driver's incapacitated or been taken off in an ambulance. We're left with that. So this, I kind of see this as our way of negotiating all in one time with those guys. And we need to be able to do that. It's just different. And I do appreciate your efforts. It sounds like you worked well with them again on this, so.
Well, the city attorney normally in the past has done it, so.
Well, the city attorney normally in the past has done it, so.
So you owe her now.
Absolutely, I do.
Okay.
And there are places where three or four trucks will show up at one time where they're not regulated. I think this is a very good ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Okay. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. So that was E1. Now we'll pick back up with C3.
C3 is an ordinance amending section 14-57 of the city code to allow street vendors to sell snow cones on public streets, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a public hearing on that, that's okay. So I'll open the public hearing if anyone would like to come forward and talk about the snow cone ordinance. Now would be the time. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C3. We have a motion, a second. And as I understand it, you're just correcting a little, allowing some flexibility in the code for these type of vendors?
This one is me. We were actually approached by a vendor who wishes to sell snow cones from a truck, like an ice cream truck, and discovered an interesting oversight. I think it was probably an oversight in our code where a street vendor can sell from the street, but only prepackaged food like an ice cream truck. You can make food in a food truck, but a food truck can't operate on the public street. And so if you want to create snow cones and sell on the public street, neither of those permits work for you. So we contacted the health department. The health department has no objection to this. They believe that the systems that are currently in place are gonna protect the general public. And so we're amending the code to allow someone who is operating a street vendor, like an ice cream truck, to sell, to manufacture and sell snow cones from that vehicle.
And they'll have an amber flashing light when they're stopped for safety.
They will still have all of the safety requirements that a snow cone, excuse me, that a ice cream truck normally has.
So we've always allowed ice cream trucks to drive up and down the streets, but we, if, but if you sold snow cones, we couldn't do that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because they manufacture the snow cones, so.
Yeah. And that's what I say, I think that's an oversight of the ordinance because I don't.
It's fixed if we, if you guys support it.
It's not prepared and they have to prepare it.
That's.
So in order not to impede traffic flow, that's why that ordinance was in place.
Yeah.
That way. But after speaking with the vendors, it makes sense. We really needed to do this, to change.
Good, good.
And that was my question, too, was the health implications because a prepackaged item is made in a factory under some scrutiny, and the food truck ordinances have the health department requirements.
That is why.
But this is sort of in between.
Yeah, that is why the street vendors have lower health requirements than a food truck does because they're not preparing food. But with the snow cones, the health department didn't see any unreasonable risk to the public.
I think Mr. Delgarza hit it on the head, though. It was more about impeding traffic and making sure they're moving quickly.
I can tell you that the current one, vendors that are asking to do this, still, they already are permitted as mobile food units, so they're already passed inspection. So they're just asking to do it both ways. They have to be permitted both ways to sell from the street end to the park, so.
And just for clarification's sake, I believe there is still a prohibition for ice, against ice cream trucks and moving food vendors in the park. This was brought about, again, here's your history lesson, ladies and gentlemen. It was brought about because there was a lot of kids running across the road to get to the ice cream truck, creating a hazard. And a couple of them got tagged many years ago. And so you can go down there and park the truck, but you can't drive around like an ice cream truck selling it in the park. They considered it a hazard.
I have a question.
I remember, I was there.
I have a question. I saw that you're gonna do the applicants, the background checks and everything else. Are we gonna include anybody that's inside of the truck that's helping? Because sometimes, you know, you'll have the driver and then somebody else is doing the selling. I, you know, just to make sure, because you're gonna be around kids, make sure those backgrounds are.
The street vendor permits are actual individual permits, so they're sold to a person, not a business. So each person gets background check. If they're working that ice cream truck, they're permitted individually.
Okay.
Right. That's the next one, right? C4? Yeah, that's fine, I just make sure. Okay, any further discussion on the snow cone ordinance, C3? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes C4.
C4 is an ordinance amending chapters 14 and 23 of the Victoria City Code to allow third-party vendors to perform criminal background checks as a part of the various applicable city permitting or licensing processes, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and providing for an effective date.
We have a public hearing on this as well, so I'll open the public hearing on C4. If anyone would like to speak to this issue, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C4, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt C4.
Second.
Motion, seconded. Questions, discussion? Chief, got anything?
Just here for questions, if there's anything.
Okay. This is more efficient, right?
Way considerably more efficient.
Okay.
It also gives a broader, like you've explained before, a broader criminal background check on people, too.
It's a much more extensive criminal history check as part of the background process. So it would be, you know, a lot more effective and more efficient for us to go to this process.
Okay.
Chief, that's gonna include all the door-to-door people that come to your house and knocking your door?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. Just, let's just, well, you can do one and two together.
There are two items remaining on the consent agenda. First, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 16, 2017. And second, a resolution reappointing Daniel Conno, M.D., and Robin Mahaka to the Victoria County Public Health Department Board of Health and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the use of temporary labor for various city departments in an estimated annual amount of $200,000 and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item D3. Second.
Counsel? I mean, motion, second, question, Josephine?
Yes, sir. The $200,000, it's over two years or two fiscal years for us? You got four months in one and eight months in the other?
That's the expected amount covering June through May. So it'd be June through September in the current year, and then October through May in the next year. It's just never been aligned with our fiscal year.
Are we, is this just the one contract that we have with people ready, or are we gonna have another one?
Well, this is, this is essentially an annual supply contract to be able to cover the costs associated contract labor. We've listed out the different agencies. Each individual agency has their own agreement, and then the departments execute agreements kind of as needed for these services.
Are we going to be using any of that money for the golf course?
Not planning on it.
Okay, so this was just something that's already budgeted? Okay.
Yes.
That was my question.
And Ms. Halleys, until we kind of get into that, what that budget's gonna look like, when I say not planning on it, that's kind of, that's my best answer right now, so.
Oh, okay.
Just got that letter from them yesterday, so that's okay.
And the department's, Colby is the one, you know, he knows what he uses his temporary labor already for, so.
Yeah. Good question. Okay. No further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. D4.
D4 is a resolution approving the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the Victoria Police Department from Rockdale County Ford in an amount not to exceed $39,400, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Questions?
My question, is that 39.
Ford, is that gonna include putting in all the extras that it needs to be turned into a?
Yes, ma'am.
That's already included in it?
There's some extra money in there for that equipment. Now, we'll reuse what we can, but.
Plus the reimbursement that we're gonna get, or is that gonna go into the bridge fund over there? That's gonna go for that vehicle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because I did my math and I said, okay.
Yeah, there's a, I think a thousand extra in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. D5.
D5 is a resolution approving the purchase of replacement tables for the Victoria Community Center in the amount of $77,277.80 from Mighty Light, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion, second, question?
What are we gonna do with all the old tables? Are we gonna sell them?
I wanted to introduce y'all to Jamie Hyville. She's been with us for about a year and a half. She is our recreation manager, which part of that entails she's over the community center. And so this is her first time to come to you as a group, and so this is Jamie Hyville.
To answer your question, what we plan on doing with the tables that we have there right now is to keep some of them back for our own purposes, for our events, but to potentially use or put the rest of them towards GovDills.
Sorry, towards what?
GovDills, it's a, how we auction off our.
Online sales. Yes, yes. I kind of suspected you, that's what y'all would do, so.
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Each year for the next three years, so that way it's not all at one time?
I'll let Jamie answer that, since she's standing up there.
We would not be replacing them in the next three years. Once we get this full replacements, we would wait for the warranty and then start replacing them in a third cycle for each following years.
Okay. That is a budget line item that says capital outlays? Okay.
We didn't have a replacement schedule, except for doing them all at once. So once this happens, Jamie.
It'll go three years now?
Jamie has set up a replacement schedule in the future, so we won't have to do all at once going forward.
That's good.
It was a great, it's a great plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Good deal, thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, passes D6.
D6 is a resolution approving the purchase of furniture for the new Parks and Recreation Administrative Building from Coastal Office Solutions in the amount of $41,107.4 authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion, second, questions?
I see that the contract with Coastal is for 30 days. Are we gonna, we're not gonna have our building done in 30 days, so we gonna store this furniture, or they're gonna deliver it once the building's done?
There is a lead time, five to six weeks lead time of ordering, because the manufacturer has to actually make it, and then they'll deliver it. And then we're hoping, if everything goes well tonight, we'll order it, and it'll be an end time for us to move in.
Okay, another question. I didn't see where you have even budgeted any computers or anything. Are y'all gonna be needing any computers for the new offices?
No, actually, I'm gonna give that to James. I think there was a series of computers that are in the proposed budget for the new fiscal year, and they will be in next fiscal year, is that correct?
All of our current computers will go with us. And so the, our server inside our Parks building will come with us. You know, we did budget at the beginning of this project for some of the IT needs to get the fiber to the building, but all of our, we won't have any computer purchases that aren't on a normal rotation cycle.
Okay. That's it.
So is this equip, this new furniture, is it replacement? Or is it because you finally have a bigger building and so you need furniture?
It is replacement. A lot of the furniture that we do have is very dated, and it is falling apart. So we took the opportunity to order all new furniture that's gonna last us for a very long time, hopefully.
Okay, great.
Colby, I know you're excited, I know all of you are. I go by your building about four times a week, as you know. I've been watching the progress, so, looks good.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. D7?
D7 is a resolution awarding the well 19 Aquifer Storage Recovery System demonstration project for alternate water supply, Part A, to Wising Incorporated for their low bid of $175,840, and Part B to Mercer Construction Company for their low bid of $196,933, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, questions?
Okay, this is well 19, the one that's gonna be used for the ASR project that we're testing, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we had to come up with an extra $189,000 to cover both things that we're gonna do. Is that because you found that it needed extra things that need to be done?
Give you a little bit of background. When we, when we originally started this project back in 2015, you know, materials cost quite a bit less, labor was a little bit less. And so when Texas Water Development Board made this money available, we put together a very fast, a very fast estimate and came in with what we thought was a very competitive project that had to go out and compete against other projects for that, for that funding. And when we submitted that grant, we hadn't done the true engineering study. We really didn't have time to do that. We had done a feasibility study, excuse me, but the true engineering and proving it up on paper hadn't been done. So after we submitted it, we started working through that process. And as we worked through it, we became more and more confident with this, with this project. And so when we came back and we decided to bid this, this project, we decided that, you know, we feel that it's, we feel very confident that this is gonna prove up to be a good project. And so we said, why don't we go ahead and add in some of the things that we didn't previously add in, like permanent chemical storage and feed, so that when we get online, it meets all the TCE requirements for a permanent well, for a permanent ASR well. There were some additional erosion control that we added. You know, of course, I mentioned that, you know, the price of pipe and material had gone up. So that is pretty much what the main difference was. We became more confident with the, with the project and felt like, let's go ahead and do this now instead of having to come back and come back to y'all again later. Could be even more expensive by that time to do this work.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. A good write-up in your CM1.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, it passes. D8?
Item D8 is a resolution awarding the rehabilitation of water well number 21 project to Crowell Drilling Company Incorporated for their low bid of $86,030, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, where are our questions?
The 21 well is gonna tie to the 19, so therefore it's gotta have the same type of, I know it's not gonna be, it's part of the ASR?
It's not really part of the ASR. It's, there's no connection to it, but we are gonna use well 21 as sort of a monitoring well. When we put the water down, well 19, we're gonna use well 21 to kind of monitor, see if it, if it migrates or moves.
You're able to do sampling, amongst other things, water levels. So as you're either coming in or going out with water, you can see what's happening. You have a theoretical model, but now you have to prove it with actual science. And that's why the monitoring well. You can also test the water, and if it matches what you put in, or not matches what you put in, it can give you data points there as well.
Exactly, thank you. Good point.
And that's the closest well we have to 19, is that why you're using it?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Good, exciting project.
It is.
To water nerds, I guess you could say.
This is a very big thing for our city.
Oh, it is. It's long-term thinking.
It has the ability to solve a lot of future problems.
Mm-hmm. Long-term thinking and investment, so appreciate it.
Very complex, difficult to explain sometimes, but it's very important.
Okay. No further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, D8 passes. So now we have a couple resolutions. We did E1 already. Just E2.
E2 is a resolution approving and adopting a post-bond insurance compliance, excuse me, post-bond issuance compliance policy and written procedures and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Counsel? Motion, seconded. Is this the OPEB? No, I'm sorry, okay.
Hold on, I guess there is. This is a, going to actually, this will be a written policy regarding all the post-bond issue. Anytime we issue bonds, there's a slew of compliance items that we have to comply with on each and every bond until the bonds are actually paid off and no longer on the books. We've had a simple procedure that's included in every bond transaction that we've done for the last, oh, probably four or five years. This would actually put it into a written policy that would be included with all of our other policies that are in the budget. So this is, you know, kind of the main thing is addressing all the IRS compliance regulations, but this will put it officially into a written policy.
Andrew, does this just take effect while the bond is open, or while we're still paying on it? Once it's paid off, it doesn't apply, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Either they're paid off or even if they're refunding, then we have to keep kind of tracing it through its, through its life.
Okay. Okay.
You know the bonds stay up, time gap, they can go back.
Okay.
It's like a tax return, you, they can go back.
Oh, they can go back, okay.
Okay.
IRS.
Any further questions? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. So we have city manager report, uh, we have the hotel, or hot fund report, so.
Is this own, it, we think it is. I, I hear myself now. Okay, we're okay. Uh, every year this time, Gilbert always tries to do a forecast on how much money we will be able to use from the hot funds for outside agency funding. And this allows Thomas then to go out, seek applications in that committee to establish how much money will be given to the agencies. Gilbert's gonna talk a little bit and then OC's gonna talk, or I assume OC's gonna talk about kind of what the trends are in hotel occupancy.
There you go. So delay. Give a little quick presentation as to occupancy. Uh, uh, the, the number of people that we've seen where we were in the past, where we are now. And I'm gonna jump in later, so what we're looking at, the numbers, what we're looking at to come in this year and what possibly look at in eighteen. OC? Delay.
While Joel is handing them out, let me explain technically what's happening with the sound. Go ahead, Joel. Yeah, yeah, you're welcome. Our audio system is two parts. The part that we're recording for the television channel is, is getting smooth recordings. Uh, you're not getting anything broken up. Where we're hearing a little bit of a breakup is out here in the system sound. And so we'll check on that. We think the delay, the attack, as they call it for microphones, might be a little bit off. So, uh, we'll take a look at that hopefully before next council meeting. And what I'm gonna show you, just four very quicks, well, really three, three very quick slides. Um, hold on. There we go. Um, Joel's gonna help me a little bit with this. This is a quick, uh, trend report on how our hotel occupancy's done in the last quarter. If you'll notice, uh, the blue line is the current year, the gold line is, uh, last year. And you'll notice, uh, really since the, the start of the second quarter, we've really had a pretty darn good quarter. We're seeing some response uh, to a lot of the weekend events. Um, and at the same time, uh, we're seeing, um, a pretty upward trend. Uh, I'll go to another slide in a little bit later to explain, uh, uh, kind of how we were in the start of the meeting, but we've been very encouraged. We're hoping that possibly, uh, we bottomed out in terms of our low end on the hotel occupancy. And I'm gonna have Joel just talk real quickly. If you look at the numbers at the bottom of that table, that'll give you the weekend Saturday. Joel's gonna give us, uh, a list of the events that were going on during those weekends to account for the increase in, in hotel stays.
Thank you, OC. Thank you, counsel. And as you can see on the slide there, um, the kickoff really happened on March twenty-fifth, which was, of course, the Texas Mall, which was a highly successful event, uh, one that will be coming to Victoria twice a year. It'll be back here in the last weekend of October. Seeing that upskewing in hotel occupancy makes us very, very confident for what the October event can bring as well. Uh, the next weekend was another very high weekend. Um, this was more, uh, leisure events that have been going on in Victoria for some time now. As, uh, for instance, a historic home store, Comic-Con, the Victoria, uh, Greater Victoria era quilt guild quilt show, Nature Fest at Cloto Creek, which is, damn, that's a relatively new event. But, uh, uh, the leisure event, uh, trend continued. Uh, you saw the Victoria Independent Film Festival the next weekend. The next weekend, a little lower naturally, being Easter, a lot of people heading out of town or spending time with their families that weekend. Um, and then on April twenty-ninth, you saw a bit of a change. Uh, sports tournaments started coming to town. We had, uh, back-to-back weekends, the South Texas Junior PGA, Little Linksters and the Prestige Golf Tour, uh, taking place. And that is a, uh, group that we worked with and have been working with for several years to bring them to Victoria. Um, continuing in April twenty-ninth, there, uh, the V T D Girls Fast Pitch Softball Tournaments, which have been coming to Victoria for a few now, few years now with great partnership through Victoria Parks and Recreation. Uh, those are some highly successful tournaments. Uh, another leisure event that weekend, the Fiesta de Victoria at the Community Center. Um, a few weekends later, the V C and U H V graduations. And then, uh, on May sixth, again, uh, now the U S S A. That is a, uh, different, um, fast pitch, uh, tournament group. So, uh, we're seeing groups that we've organized with, uh, lead into other groups coming into town to, uh, have softball tournaments at the U Sports Complex, uh, in places like that. Uh, May nineteenth, the Warriors Weekend, uh, of course, been going on in Victoria, Porticon area for some time now. And then the Golden Crescent Antique Auto Club Tour. Now that was more of an automotive group, more of a conference, uh, meeting, uh, group that we, uh, we did a few services for them as well. Uh, and they had a, a great group there at the Hilton Garden Inn. Um, the Memorial Day Weekend was, was very large. Uh, that was the, another of the V T D Girls Fast Pitch Softball Tournaments. I know that one brought in, uh, close to over sixty teams that weekend, as well as an adult softball tournament at the, uh, uh, adult softball complex. And then, uh, the Memorial Weekend Bash, which has been a successful music concert taking place at the Victoria Community Center for the last few years. So we've had a great mix of, uh, a few meetings, but now sports and leisure have really driven this rise in the last few, last few weeks.
If you look at the, uh, figures on the left-hand side of that table, you'll see those are the hotel occupancy percentage. Uh, and as Joel said, uh, we've had a great mix of events and they all seem to be having a pretty good impact. Primary, uh, uh, also especially, as he mentioned, the, uh, Parks and Recs tournaments, the fast pitch, uh, slow and fast pitch tournaments are adding a lot of economic impact to, to the community. And we're hoping that's gonna continue. Uh, it looks like, uh, uh, it's continuing on as we get into the summer travel season when there are a lot of people out and about. Some of the bigger events start going away and certainly during the heat of the summer, we see a reduction in events. Uh, now, one of the things that's working against us is the average daily hotel rate. Uh, now here in this case, uh, the blue line again is this year, the gold line is last year. And you'll notice that this year's hotel rates, by a small margin, uh, uh, lag what we had last year. It has been picking up, uh, but for the most part, the competitiveness, the competitiveness of the hotels, uh, is very evident. We have a lot more hotel rooms than we had, uh, five years ago, uh, but our, our current rate is lagging last year. So we'll have to overcome that, uh, difference, uh, in, to make up for it basically in hot fund collections. And then this last slide is, uh, I kind of pieced together, uh, a, a, a very long history of hotel occupancy tax, highlighting really just three years. Uh, the left-hand column there is two thousand and twelve. Now that is the year we, uh, set a record for the amount of hot, uh, taxes that were collected, uh, two point zero one nine million. Uh, that was probably at the peak of Eagle Ford exploration and drilling. Uh, the hotel rates the next year, I mean, excuse me, the hotel occupancy rate the next year started really dropping. But look at the very bottom figure on that left-hand column. Uh, in two thousand and twelve, we had twelve hundred and eighty-one rooms. If you look at what we have now, nineteen hundred and twenty-eight rooms, um, you know, we had six hundred plus hotel rooms added uh, after the peak year in what was basically a dwindling market already from a business travel standpoint, particularly with oil exploration. Uh, so, uh, you, you know, I've said, I think we, we, we may be a little bit over-hotelled, uh, but at the same time, we're hoping the current uptick might help. Now, the next column is two thousand and sixteen, that was last year. Uh, you'll notice that that, uh, collection totaled one point three four seven million. So, uh, you do the math on the two million and the one point three five, it's a pretty big drop, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this year's projection, uh, there in the second to the right column was one point three six million. Uh, hopefully a little bit higher, and we think we're gonna make that, uh, uh, with a little bit of luck and if the, the hotel occupancy, uh, demand stays strong. Uh, and then currently right now with the, uh, despite the increase, we did start the quarter off slow. If you look at the two thousand and seventeen column, uh, the first month of the fiscal year in October, we were still off for the first five months of this fiscal year. Uh, then it has picked up the last few months and picked up rather strongly uh, to where, uh, total the, uh, variance in the budget on that, uh, second to the last column for twenty seventeen were about the less than five hundred dollars away from the projected amount, uh, uh, for where we should be right now. Uh, so we've kind of dug our way out of the hole. Hopefully, uh, the, uh, strength, uh, and the demand will continue. And, uh, you know, we might finish up strong and, and maybe have, uh, uh, a little bit more money to distribute to the arts than we did last year. And Joel and I are here to answer any questions you might have about, uh, either events or the tracking and trending of, of our hotel occupancy.
Good stuff. I, I have to pick on Gilbert though, because he's grinning. So on a one point three six million dollar estimate, you're five hundred dollars off so far.
Yeah, I imagine that.
Wow, okay.
And I was gonna mention the fact, he, he had it pegged at one three six and he thought it would start increasing towards the latter part of the year. I'm hoping he's gonna be wrong on the positive side, we're gonna collect more than that.
Well, I have always given him a hard time on the infamous, who's off by five thousand dollars on an eighteen million dollar estimate for sales tax and, uh, but I'm, I'm happy to see that, but I tease him about it. That's great if you're actually that close. I hope so.
One thing I want to mention about the tax and hot fund disbursements, I still want us to get to the point where we're not looking at projections to base our, um, disbursements that we allow. I want to get where we know last year's numbers and we base it off of that. And what do we need to do to get to that point?
I think Gilbert did some of that last year.
Well, you wanna start, you wanna start a fund and hold some back.
Yeah, I think, but we did that last year.
You started it?
Yes, yes. Yes, we did.
I'll refresh the mic, y'all, in a minute. I just wanna say, you know, I think we need to let OC do the whole thing, presentation. I mean, he's got in the numbers like, wow. He, he need to do the whole presentation. You know, you don't need me up here. All right, James?
Well, the other thing that might be pertinent is last year, when we were way short, as you know, if we don't collect it, we don't pay it out. And too many of these organizations were counting on the amount of money that we thought we could budget, and it came up short. They all need to be reminded that this is, um, not a stable fund. It is gonna be variable because the economy is variable. And not to rely upon it. If you got twenty thousand, was it gonna be twenty thousand? It may or may not be. And, and there were some that had counted on that to the extent that it put a burden on them. They need to be reminded perhaps often that this is a variable fund that we cannot control.
Okay, counsel. Um, he's handing out a handout basically, but I have a presentation, kind of condense it. That's for, you know, you wanna go home, take a look at it and count some numbers, but, um, basically, what you're seeing right there on your screen right now, this is what the old seventeen budget looks like right now. We started with beginning balance, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had budgeted one point three six million dollars. Some re, some miscellaneous revenue, uh, the city's expenditures about one point three. And last year, uh, per council direction, we had a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to allocate out, a hundred thousand dollars for the outside agency and sixty-four thousand dollars for the mainstream program. Below that, you end up with approximate fund balance, you're thinking about a hundred and sixteen thousand. This is maybe where you're suggesting, Mr. Bucknight, we decide to come up with some type of reserve to establish, so it kind of smoothed out the ups and downs. So we did an eighty-twenty from last time. It's council priority, you can change whatever you want. So that ninety-two versus twenty-three, that's eighty-twenty split of the fund balance, okay?
Okay.
Moving forward, the next slide on the side of it is basically the amended budget. Only thing I want to, everything stays the same, set the beginning balance. The beginning balance came in higher due to the fact that motel tax came in about forty-three thousand dollars higher. Uh, miscellaneous revenues came in about seven thousand dollars higher and expenses came in under by sixty-five thousand, mainly on the city side. Now here's where I'm looking at for twenty seventeen, where I think we're gonna end up slightly above budget, not much, one point three six four percent. Probably a little conservative, but I, I don't think it's gonna be far from that. Usually, uh, I'm gauging, my budget runs about one fif, one thirteen, one fifteen a, a month. We, last month came in one twenty-three, but the gap is really small, so I, I'm still comfortable with a one point three six four. Uh, as you notice, below that, city expenditures, uh, I, I'm projecting coming in the same line as budgeted. The only difference here is the outside agency. We have one entity called the Hot Rod Production. We were notified they're not gonna put, put on the program, so that was twenty-five hundred dollars came off the table. With all that said, we're thinking, projecting, end up with the fund balance started for the next year around two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. With that said, hotel tax, I'm looking at about a minimal aggressive one point five percent increase, which is about twenty thousand dollars. That's what I'm doing right now. Due to the fact like OC was talking about, yeah, we have an increase, but those rates are still not where they should be because they're very competitive. And there's a lot of rooms out there. Where we're at here tonight, on the highlight yellow part, is where a decision has to be made as to what council will like to allocate for the next year's twenty eighteen budget. As it stands right now, with the city approximating for the twenty eighteen, you're looking at one point three, it leaves the fund balance without anybody else about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Now, I have a suggestion. Of course, council has the last decision, but I thought maybe I spur the conversation by going this route. Since we have a three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar fund balance possible, one way to do this is all allocate a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to the outside, sixty thousand dollars to mainstream program, which leaves you a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Well, Gilbert, how'd you come up with that number? Okay. And looking at it, last year, as I mentioned before, we left, it was decided to give a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We have an increase from last year to this year, budgeted from a twenty thousand dollar increase. So it's okay, that makes it a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Mainstream program has submitted their request. They're asking for sixty thousand dollars. And I assume the difference would go to the outside agency, a hundred and twenty-four thousand. If this stands, then you're looking at, again, like I mentioned earlier, a fund balance, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and you plug those numbers and the, that one twenty-seven is an eighty-twenty split, a hundred and one from the city and twenty-five thousand for the outside raise, outside agencies. That's where it stands now. Now those numbers can change however council wants to do it. Uh, hand the ball back.
Very, very early in the process.
Well, but yeah, uh, just as a reminder, Thomas needs a number to start his committee work, so it's early in the budget process, you're correct, but it'd be nice if we could.
I would propose that we stick with the ninety-seven thousand five hundred for the next budget year. I want to accelerate if we can, if we have a, a small increase in that budget for the motel tax revenue to get to a point where we can be consistent and do it based on what we already have, not what we're projecting we're going to have.
In my, in other words, build up that reserve where you can start allocating that, you know, this is what you're gonna get because you have it there. And then everything else just replaces as you go, which is a good strategy, but we need to build it up to the point. And one way to do it is you need to squeeze the outlet, I mean, the outtake right now to increase the future outflow.
And then they're, get that money as a guaranteed fund and they're not wondering if it's gonna become, be in their budget or not.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what, what was your proposed dollar amount?
Ninety-seven thousand five hundred, just what it is this year.
What was the twenty-five hundred again?
Or if you're just gonna make it a hundred thousand, what did we start it off, off with?
Why was it twenty-five, what was that, twenty, twenty-five hundred dollar reduction?
Uh, the, the, the hot rod or hat rod?
Oh, twenty-five, uh, hot rod decided, they submit it, they got approved, allocate it, they're not gonna do the program. So it comes off. They did, I was notified they weren't gonna do it.
Yeah, I would just suggest a hundred thousand. I understand, just.
But it's, but it's still a variable source. We can build up our fund balance and, and, and get a better guarantee.
Yeah, get to that.
To the outside agencies.
We can get to it.
However, it's still gonna be a variable source year to year.
No, when we make that allocation decision for hot fund disbursement, it will be, we will already know that we're gonna have that fund to distribute. Right now, we allocate based on a forecast of what we're gonna collect in the next year.
Okay, actually do it in arrears, yeah.
So, so you're, really all you're saying is you want that number to be guaranteed for the following year. You're not saying that it's.
We're not there yet.
But that's what you're trying to get to is, so that we're not cutting them like we did a year or so ago.
Yes, so that they can count on that when we say this is gonna be your disbursement, that we already have those funds and they know that their budget can be built and it's solid based on the number they're getting from us.
I think we can get there sooner than later. I'm always optimistic about it. You know, that one big economic development project shows up in town and we could get there in three years to what you wanna do, but it might take eight or ten, I don't know. We'll see, but I, I agree.
The only question at hand is that what, what's that level you wanna get at?
Yeah, well, when we get there, we'll know.
I know.
And it would address like what, uh, Mr. Hal Pascoe was saying, it would address that.
So basically, we're.
Fix that over time, yeah.
So tonight, we're gonna go propose and I assume a hundred thousand dollars for the outside sixty-four mainstream and everything else, go back to the fund balance and build it up.
Right.
Sounds good.
So it's not a reduction to last year or anything. That's what you need.
That's what I've got.
Good.
And mayor and council, we have a, a program designed that is very similar to what we've done in the past. We will begin contacting the outside agencies that have applied in the past to let them know what the application schedule looks like. Um, tentatively, at this point, we're looking at the applications being published by the end of this month and being, uh, available for them to return back to us by July twenty-first. What that means is we would be able to make a recommendation back to council by the regular meeting, the second regular meeting in August in the middle of the budget process, so that it can be incorporated into the budget.
Excellent. Getting better every year, I think. I think y'all agree, okay. Do you have anything further, Sean?
I don't.
Okay, that concludes our business and we're adjourned. Thank you. Hour and ten minutes?